Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Fairfield representative town meeting held on October 5th, 2020 via WebEx. This meeting is using a different WebEx link that is available to the public. So while those on the call, including some members of the public who might be on the call, will generally be muted, I suggest that you also mute your own phones just to be doubly sure. I also want to mention that the reason we're using this link is to encourage public comment. We haven't been able to do that during the pandemic, but this link will allow us to do that. So going forward, if the public looks on our agenda for meetings, there'll be instructions for how to email the RTM to ask to speak at the meeting, and I hope that people will do that. As a reminder, two participants tonight. Please identify yourself as you begin to speak. I ask that the clerk do the roll call. Betsy?
Veronica Monahan. She's here. Amy O'Shea. Here. Ms. Ayacano, is there an announcement regarding filling the vacancy in District 1?
Yes, Amy Roggero has been elected to replace Steve Chasser to move to Massachusetts.
Thank you. Anna Roggero. Present. Tiffany Perret. Jeff Steele. Alex Derout. That's it.
Here.
Scott Nichol.
Here.
Sharon Pacili. Laura Carleton.
Here.
Alice Kelly.
Here.
Meredith Odinek.
Here.
Marcus Sawyer.
Here.
Josh Garscoff.
Here.
Josh, do you have an announcement regarding District 5?
I do. I'd like to welcome Will Diaz to District 5. He's taking the seat of Julie Gottlieb, who has moved out of town.
Thank you. Will Diaz. Joe Seibert.
Here.
Jay Walk.
Here.
Matt Ambrose. Hannah McGale. Lisa Havy.
Here.
I'm here.
Tamisha Dunward. Lauren Botha.
Here.
Mark McSerns.
Here.
Jill Vergara.
Here.
Darren Wackerman.
Here.
Fifteen Messina.
Here.
Peter Tomlin. Joe Giorgiades.
Here.
Rick Raff. Chrissy Kelly.
Here.
Bill Perigini.
Here.
Janine Aleanello.
Here.
Elizabeth Altabelli.
Here.
MRS Ringel.
Thank you very much. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Betsy, I'm not sure if you see Veronica's chat. Want to make sure that you know she's on the call. Representative Monahan.
Yes, I have her. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. The next item is to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular monthly meeting held on July 27th, 2020. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Representative Gale, seconded by Representative Giorgiades. Thank you. Are there any comments or changes to the minutes before we vote on them? Any discussion? Okay, then we'll do a vote. Can you unmute yourselves for the vote? All in favor of...
I need to...I'm sorry, Karen. I need to take a motion to amend.
Okay.
Uh, there was one RTM member who I believe was present but wasn't listed as present in the minute. Scott Nichol.
Okay.
Um, can we just confirm with Scott to make sure that that's accurate? He wasn't listed, but I believe he was there.
Yeah, I was there.
Thank you. So is the motion as amended? Is there anyone else who has any changes? Okay. So the motion is to approve the minutes as amended to add Representative Nichol as an attendee. All in favor of approval, say aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Okay. Abstained? Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to receive a report from the tax assessor regarding the tax relief for the elderly and disabled homeowners program. We received this report at committee, so we're set with that. Item four on the agenda, to hear, consider, and act upon the following appointment as an alternate to the historic district commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Darren Raymond Locke, unaffiliated, 515 Stilson Road. The term will be November 2019 to 2024. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Representative Vergara, seconded by Representative McDermott. Any comments or questions? We did hear from Ms. Raymond Locke at the committee meeting. Does anyone have any comments? Okay, then please unmute and we'll vote...let's see. We'll vote on this motion. Please unmute. All in favor of item four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Karen?
Yes. Hi, Pam.
Oh, sorry. Nope. I'm just figuring out my mic, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. We hear you now. Opposed? Anyone opposed? Abstained? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Item five on the agenda is to hear, consider, and act upon the following appointment as an alternate to the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Timothy W. Bezler, Democrat, 178 Glengarry Road, term of November 2018 to 2022, and this is to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Dabney G. Bowen. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Representative Giorgiades, second. Anybody? Let's see. Representative Bové, thank you. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Bezler did join us for our committee meeting last week. Okay, seeing none, please unmute and we'll take a vote. All in favor of this item, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Item six on the agenda, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolved that First Select Woman Brenda L. Cupchik be and hereby is authorized to accept on behalf of the Town of Fairfield a 2020 Connecticut Steep Grant up to $128,205 for Fairfield Center pedestrian improvements, and further resolved that First Select Woman Brenda L. Cupchik is hereby authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain said 2020 Steep Grant with the State of Connecticut. May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Representative Ringel, seconded by Representative McDermott. Are there...Mr. Hurley presented on this item at the committee meeting. Are there...is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we'll take a vote. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Item seven on the agenda, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Whereas the Town of Fairfield wishes to exercise its option to purchase 350 Quincy Street from Lisa Headley for the sum of $295,000, as more particularly set forth in the real estate sales agreement between said parties, and whereas funds for the purchase of said property may be taken from the Housing Trust Fund as approved by the Affordable Housing Committee at its meeting of September 9th, 2020. Now therefore, be it resolved that First Select Woman Brenda L. Cupchik be and hereby is authorized to enter into and sign contracts and expend such monies on behalf of the Town of Fairfield for the purpose of purchasing said property in accordance with the above and the attached agreement. May I have a motion to approve this item? Representative Kelly, Alice Kelly, seconded by Representative Pacili. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Barnhart did present to the committee last week. Any questions or discussions? Okay, seeing none, please unmute and we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Item seven on the agenda, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the First Select Woman. Resolved to fund and approve the attached agreements between the Town of Fairfield and the United Public Service Employees Union Number 454, the Fairfield Professional and Technical Employees Union, and United Public Service Employees Union Number 222, including non-union eligible employees, for a voluntary early retirement incentive plan, VERIP, for eligible members. May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Representative Gale, seconded by Representative Spallier. Thank you. Is there any discussion? I know that Mr...before I see...well, if you see Mr. Gerber would like...Representative Gerber would like to discuss something, but I first wanted to just check if Representative...if Mr. Hazelcamp, the HR Director, is on the call? And for Select Woman, I know that we're going to be hearing from them as well. Brenda, I'm not sure if you're talking. Can't hear you. Maybe while they work on that, the sound there, I'll have Representative Gerber, would you like to ask your question or start your discussion?
Well, I'd like to start the discussion and just make a general point that I'm very excited when a leader, a town leader, talks about modernizing the town, making it more efficient, you know, the potential to provide higher quality service for people in the town. I don't think anyone would argue with that being a good objective. So thank you for thinking about that, Representative, I mean, First Select Woman Cupchik. The, you know, the problem at this point is we are talking about a potential number of about $20 million of the cost, and that is a very large exposure. I know it may be less, it may be half that, we don't know, but we have to look at it in terms of the potential exposure of $20 million or more. And normally, at least everything that I've looked at, when we have large material expenditures, we get a very thorough presentation that shows a vision, that shows the potential costs, and shows the payback. And I could just think of, you know, many, many, you know, when we look at something, you know, just a fraction of this size, maybe Smith Richardson or something like that, or Penfield Pavilion, we spend, you know, I don't know, how many thousands of hours are spent on those projects, and how many tens or hundreds of hours are spent communicating to the various boards, getting holes poked in and pushback, you know, scenarios, you know, what may go wrong, what's the payback, what's the potential, you know, revenue stream, what are the potential additional, potential additional costs, all of that. And the way I feel about this is going with a concept that we can modernize town government if we, you know, commit to $20 million is far from the due diligence that we need to do to...
Representative Garber, Madam Moderator? I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just want to tell you in the chat, it looks like Town Hall is disconnected, so I think, Representative Gerber, you might not be...they might not be hearing you.
No, they can't. I see that. You're right.
Well, I mean, I can't do anything about that. You know, maybe I should just speak to...they can listen to the recording, maybe, but I can also speak to my fellow people in the RTM. I mean, it's up to you, Madam Moderator. I'm just hoping people agree with me as well, and that we can, maybe they can listen later if they can dial in.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think we have to keep going, and we may have to repeat some of this when they come back on. I can't really tell if they can hear us. I know that she did...they did mention they can't hear us right now while they're trying to call in. Rep...First Select Woman, can you confirm?
It's being recorded, right?
Yeah, yeah, it is. I'm not sure she can even hear us. Yep. They're working on it. Okay.
Can't hear it.
Well, I can repeat it too, but we've got a lot of rational, rational people on this body, and I would think that most of us, most of us aren't used to, aren't used to committing dollars this size without, you know, without seeing the detailed numbers and the potential paybacks modeled out. I personally, that, you know, we, as a body, the RTM has been very supportive of First Select Woman Cupchik, that, you know, she, you know, wanted to substantially increase the Town Hall budget. And, you know, there was some pushback, but we ultimately gave her everything she wanted. But this number is far too large to do that. I believe it...I would feel it was irresponsible to vote on this.
Try it, try it.
Um, Brenda, are you hearing me?
There's a lot of noise in the background.
Yeah. First Select Woman, can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Great, okay.
This is different than what's in here. All right, try that.
Do I repeat?
Okay.
Do I repeat what I said?
I don't know if you heard Representative Gerber. Were you able to hear him? I don't think she can hear.
Oh, there's music.
Now there's music.
I hear a drum beat.
Yes. Um...
That's the old music.
I don't think she can hear us. Oh, okay.
Representative...Madam Moderator, it's Representative Iacono. Can we please take a recess while we figure out technical difficulties?
I think that's probably a good idea. Let's do a recess.
Thank you.
And, okay, thanks.
Can you check with Dave Kelly and then let us know?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. Um...so let's resume our meeting and end the recess, please, so everyone can join back in. Okay, I'm not sure you got to hear Representative Gerber, so maybe Billy could just briefly...
Yes, I did. I just want to correct Representative Gerber. It's not $20 million.
Oh, that was the presentation that your office gave us.
The numbers that we gave in LNA showed $9 million over 21 years.
It showed, it showed...no, it showed $9 million twice.
$10 million, $10 million, sorry.
$10 million times two, right?
Oh, I thought it was...
$10 million for the OPEB, $10 million for...
Right, correct, correct.
Okay, yeah, so you heard what I said.
That's if it was for everybody, which we said that's...
Right, right, and I understand that. Even if it's half that, $10 million, if you heard what I said, $10 million is something that I believe would be irresponsible. I would feel that I wasn't doing my duty without understanding the payback. Every time we've spent that level of money, or committed to that level of money, we've had detailed, we've had detailed presentations that include vision and objectives, but also the numbers about what the payback is going to be over the life of the project. And I just want, you know, and to reiterate that we all, I would hope most of us are on board with the idea of modernizing town government and would be supportive of that. But of course, there's, there has to be, you know, the numbers have to work, and we really haven't seen the numbers. We've seen one side of the numbers, and I know those are also going to be, you know, looked at in more detail by other bodies. But assuming that those numbers are what they are, the other side of it is really the promise of a payback, of a return on investment. And I believe we haven't seen any of that, not really, you know, any at all, you know. So I think, from where I stand, is I would, I know there, that you're, in your mind, or maybe in your office, you've run through some of that, but it hasn't been provided. We, I don't think this body should be expected to vote on something where we only see a cost of this magnitude, which could have, you know, major implications for the town going forward. If you could, over the, you know, the course of the next couple of weeks, provide us with something, that would be great. If not, you know, hopefully there's a way to, you know, plan for this in the current year budget and get the details to us when you're ready. I'm sure you can do it, and if it works, you know, I'd love to, I'd love to support it. But again, I don't think that this body should be expected to approve something where we don't see the return. And I'm sure there is one, again, it's just not been shown to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Iacono?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I see that the First Select Woman is here tonight, and I know we got off to a little bit of a rocky start with technical stuff, but I was wondering if we could open the floor up to her and let her follow up on some of the things that came out of the last meeting, some of the things that we had discussed through LNA that we were looking for as leadership. It's my understanding that Hooker and Holcomb is here tonight to discuss their methodology, and can we begin that whole process?
Mm-hmm, sounds like a good idea. Madam First Select Woman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you for the opportunity. And to just address Mr. Gerber, we, I thought we did present information at the first Monday meeting, and then more information at the LNA meeting we had here in the conference room for quite a few hours, going over the spreadsheet and all the information that was provided to us by the actuaries and by Mr. Hazelcamp, the sheet that we gave you, and I believe the entire RTM has the same sheet. I thought, I would imagine the Madam Moderator who shared that information. And in that information includes a whole host of things that Mr. Hazelcamp could speak more directly to. And just to give an overview about the vision and why we decided to do this, you know, the needs of our town have changed over the last few decades. Our population of our town has grown and diversified. Our town government hasn't changed with the times. What we're looking to do, the goal, is to improve services to our town residents, modernize our town government, reorganize our town departments, create efficiencies, eliminate duplication in town government, and hire employees with cutting-edge skill sets for the 21st century. Alternatives to this program would include, alternatives that were sort of impeding it are contract reorganization. Layoffs would be very disruptive to the overall government due to bumping rights, arbitration costs, and grievance procedures. The early retirement program allows flexibility for us to rethink government, to consolidate positions, eliminate positions, create new positions that fit today's government and is reflective of the needs of our community. And I would refer to the DPW audit that was done. I'm assuming most of you've read that. And if you read that, it shows very clearly and starkly the problems, not just in that department, because I would argue that if we had done an audit on any single department in town government, we would find similar problems as far as efficiencies and issues that need to be addressed. We want to look at creating floating administrative people for departments that are busier during certain times, and we want to hire for 2020 in the future, and we want to change the culture. The challenges moving ahead for us that have been addressed by this body are a brain drain. Once we know which employees are taking the package, certain positions can be immediately posted that will need to be replaced. We can temporarily hire back employees on a part-time basis until positions are filled, and the timeline is our HR is working, our HR department is working on updating job descriptions so that the hiring process can begin soon, and we fully expect there to be vacancies for a period of time that will cause, will allow for some savings as well. Department heads have been incorporated into this process and have been asked to communicate ideal ways to improve their departments. The future going forward is professional development, provide continual training for our staff and our managers, clear-cut job descriptions and expectations, document performance gaps, and encourage professional growth. Institute a culture of accountability and collaboration, interdepartment meetings, cross-department communication with clear goals and objectives, and, the most important, developing a customer-service orientated mission statement that reflects our town. I just want to say, we worked really hard, you know, to get as much information as possible. I worked, when I first wanted to do this, I went to the town attorney and said, what does the town have to do? What do I have to do to comply with the rules? And I was told by the town attorney that according to the town code, the town charter, and state statute, that I had to put these plans together, and I had to present them to the RTM. That was the only body who was responsible for voting on it, and to share it with the unions through the HR department, to gauge some interest so they could be aware of it. And so Mr. Hazelcamp did that. It took a tremendous amount of time and work, and I can respect that the RTM wants some additional information from the pension board and from the Board of Finance. They want their opinions so that they can make, you can make a better decision going forward. However, I do have faith in the numbers that we were given by the actuary. However, I do, um, have faith in the numbers that we were given by the actuary. It's an actuary who's been working for our town for twenty years, and far, for, as far as I know, no one has ever disputed the numbers that our actuary has given over the years, including this year, and I mean just the numbers. Um, Mr. Hazelcamp, uh, has literally spent the entire, uh, after Thursday evening's LNA meeting here, uh, that went late, uh, Thursday evening, has spent Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and today answering a multitude of questions regarding this, um, packages and information, and he has answered all of them. So, I would hope that, um, the moderator shared all of the answers, as well as those questions, uh, with the body, so that they have that information, because I think it's important, and he did put a quite a bit of time into answering those many, many questions. Um, I think I, I think that's the process about it. Uh, we are, we stand ready, my administration stands ready, uh, to answer any and all questions, uh, by members, to help, uh, people feel more comfortable, and, um, I have reached out, I did reach out many times to the Pension Board leadership to come in and meet with us, and talk to the actuaries, uh, last week, and I did again this week. Um, I am aware that the Pension Board Chairman has, and I am on the Pension Board, uh, has set a, a meeting up for next week to, um, vote on, uh, hiring a third-party actuary to review the numbers that have already been calculated by the town's actuary, um. However, uh, I, I, I mean, I understand that people want a second opinion, and that's fine. I, I personally feel that it's a waste of taxpayers' money because I believe it will be the same numbers. Um, it's the data, and it's crunching the numbers like anybody would crunch them, based on the data. So, but I understand that the, uh, RTM wants that, and they want, uh, I've heard that the RTM also wants the Board of Finance and Pension Board to have a joint meeting and review, uh, the packages, I would imagine they'd want the information. My concern is that, uh, waiting until next week to get a third-party actuary hired, and then subsequently, you're taking two to three weeks for that actuary to do the same thing H&amp;H did, um, is going to delay this, um, opportunity, and I just want to speak, uh, I think Mr. Representative Gerber said earlier about why this wasn't done in the budget process. Um, the budget process is stressful enough, um, and, and on the amount of work, the plan was, is, is to o- offer these packages, reorganize and decide where we want to hire and what we want to hire, put those out there and have them fill the ones we want before the budget process, so everyone is aware of where we are, we are going into the next budget, so people understand what the positions are, and their salaries and everything is buttoned up, so then we can begin the budget process, which is arduous, uh, in this town, and a lot of time and effort goes into it, um, on behalf of my administration. So, that's just the answer to that question, and I'll open it up, and Mr. Hazelcamp is in the room, and he's happy to come up and answer any questions, and I'm happy to also answer any questions anyone has. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do have a couple of, um, representatives who'd like to comment. First is Representative Pistilli. Uh, Sharon, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was double muted, my apologies. Um, Sharon Pistilli, um, District Three, um, I had one question with respect to, um, paying for the second opinion, um, on the pension figures, um, is that paid out of the pension trust fund, or is that paid by taxpayers?
Um, I guess I, I, this is, um, Brenda, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, actually, I, I don't know. I, I would imagine if the Pension Board, um, votes to do it, it comes out of their fund?
I, that's my understanding, that the Pension Board pays for that. Um, I don't know who paid for the initial Hooker and Holcomb, um, analysis, if that was the pension trust fund or the town, and that, that is a question that some of us have.
The town, the town, the town-
The town. Okay, thanks.
But the, the pension trust would pay, right? I'm sorry, the pension trust would pay for the second opinion, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, is it okay if I have another question, or would you like to call me, on me later?
That's okay. Go ahead, Sharon.
Um, okay, so, I had another question, um, so, we've, we've, we all agree on the goal of, of modernizing government, and, um, usually, like, when you go through a restructuring, restructuring should net-net save money, like, in order for it to be worthwhile, um, for, you know, whatever organization is doing the restructuring, but in this case, we're seeing, like, we, we can't, we don't know the real numbers yet, right, but based on the estimates that we're seeing, this is going to cost us, in recurring charges for the next twenty years, either a half a million more a year, or a million more a year. Usually, there are other scenarios that go along with, um, just personnel changes that would, um, you know, that would be alternatives. So, what if we took that same amount of money and just invested it in technology instead of taking on this additional pension expense, and, and, um, you know, have other scenarios in terms of, like, technology implementation, or even, you know, is it possible that it's less expensive to hire, um, you know, double hire for now? It might be cheaper to hire a few more people rather than offer enhanced retirement to others, because if, if it's going to be a half a million to a million more a year, that's like, you know, ten hundred thousand dollar positions, that if you factor in benefits, it'd be eighty thousand dollar positions that are 401A eligible, so it's possible that we could double hire and still net-net make out a head than offering something that the town potentially might not be able to afford, and we don't know what the return on investment is, and like, for this amount of expenditure, we want it, we want a roadmap. I mean, you know, we've been entrusted in, um, you know, in, in how the town spends our money, so we have to do our diligence to make sure, uh, you know, that we're going to, to get, get our money's worth in this.
Thank you. Um, I, Representative Gerber is going to speak, but I just wanted to make, to make one correction to something you said, um, First Select Woman. Um, the RTM is not requesting a, a new actuary, that's not our issue. We're, we're asking the Pension Board to let us know how this will impact the pension, and, um, therefore, the finances of the town, and it's up to the Pension Board what they think they need to do to, um, to do that, so, you know, we're not, we don't have that specific request. We're just saying, can you look at this, please, and tell us what the pension impact is, um, on the town, so I just wanted to clarify that. Um, Representative Gerber?
Yeah, so circling back on, um, uh, First Select Woman's subject response to what I said, um, we, we have received, um, stuff from your office and from, uh, Mr. Hazelcamp on the costs and some breakout of the costs, but we have not received any cohesive or any detailed information on the return on investment, on, on the payback of doing it. I mean, um, we, we, what we received, we received some verbiage, um, which is what you just said, basically, "It's going to be great," you know, almost like, you know, "Trust me, it's going to be great, we need to do this, uh, we need to modernize, we need to improve, you know, skills, we need to..." But we haven't, you know, th- that, that level, um, wouldn't cut it. That level of, of detail wouldn't cut it for any other project that I've ever, or any other, like, large expenditure that I've ever worked on, uh, as, as an RTM member. Um, every, every large expenditure, my gosh, it goes through, you know, every, every stone's turned over, people have to defend the numbers, they have to defend the expenditures, they have to d- defend the, the, um, the income that's going to come in, they have to defend the return, um, and a lot of times through that process, usually, you know, when it gets to the Board of Finance, um, uh, that, that can ultimately end up in, in a change in the project, because, you know, the assumptions may not be acceptable to, to them. I think what we're being asked to do is approve this with a standard that is so much lower than what we would normally, you know, see going through, like, a typical, uh, process. I understand this doesn't have to legally go through the Board of Finance, but the, the level of detail on the numbers that will, will go out, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years, wha- whatever i- it may be, um, we have seen nothing. So, I, I, you know, to say that we've gotten, uh, I just wanted to sort of correct the record, that we have not gotten that, and that would be sort of what I, what I'd be looking for. I'd like to see something where, you know, the, the Town Hall, um, wh- where your office is committing to certain objectives, to certain milestones, things that we can measure, things that we can say in a year, two years, three years, four years, "Yeah, you know, okay, she said she was going to do this, and she's done it." But we, we actually don't know what any of this, what the implications of any of, any of this costs are, are actually going to be, other than some, some words of modernization, that, you know, updating, you know, what, uh, people, whatever, twentieth century or twenty-first century, that, that's not normally the way we do things here, and, and, I mean, other people, feel free to comment, but I, I don't think it would be, I, and I, and I believe your office can do it, I mean, um, you've got more people, um, that, that have these skills than we've ever had before i- in your office, so, you know, I believe you can do it, and I think if you did it, it would be beneficial for, for all of us, and, and, and we would applaud it, uh, we'd applaud the success.
So, I, I appreciate that, Representative, uh, Gerber, um, you know, I, I, Mr. Hazelcamp has been doing this for thirty-five years, and, and he's done a number of these in other towns, um, Stanford, Waterbury, other communities, and he has said he has never had this much level of discussion regarding an early retirement package, and so I would submit to you that there is the details in this document, uh, that was presented, the numbers, all the numbers, total cost, savings, net cost, pension increase, OPEP trust fund, waiver for retiree health care contribution, vacation payout, um, 401A five percent replacement, for the whole, all of it's here. All of the, the numbers and those details are here. You're, what you're asking me is to quantify, what you're asking me to do is quantify who's going to take the package, which I don't know, and somehow, um, explain or put in some spreadsheet exactly how I'm going to reorganize without knowing who's going to take it yet, um, and, and frankly, that's not been done in other towns, so I would submit to you that there's got to be some level of trust, um, of course, given here, and I would say that, um, if I don't deliver on what I'm saying, that I'm going to reorganize my better services for our community, a more modernized Town Hall government, if I don't provide those services that the people of Fairfield ask me to provide, and ask me every single day when they call to complain about our services in Town Hall, they can, uh, vote me out when I'm up for reelection, and that's kind of how this job works, right? It's not like a business where I'm, I'm a CEO forever, or I'm going to show some level of profit. Um, I have to prove to the, to the community that I am delivering for them, and that's, that's my responsibility to do. I would love to say to you, yes, I could put all these spreadsheets together, and if A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, employees left, this is what I'd like to do, this is how I'd like to move people around, but again, it's all speculative on who takes it, and the way this process works, my understanding of it, is, I, 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 I have, the RTM has to approve a package proposal. I can't, they can't say they're taking it until it's actually been approved, and then, once that happens, is when the wheels start moving of change and reorganization. I know it's different than we would do it in the normal business world, as, as a business owner for a long time, it's not the way I would do it, but this is the way government has it set up, and so, I submit to you that, um, there's got to be a little trust, and I believe that my, uh, HR Director and our actuaries have provided a great level of detail, and I hope that you'll ask a lot of good questions from the actuaries, and how they got to these numbers, so that you have some faith in them, but even if you get a third-party actuary to take all the data that H&amp;H receives-
But can, can we stick to my, that, that, that's not my question.
And calculate it, it's going to end up, it's going to end up with the same number.
I, I, I'm not asking about the, the actuary or the number, I'm asking about, you know, the, the payback, and, and, um, and, and you've said that Mr. Hazelcamp's done this in other towns, we have seen nothing about what, you know, and, and we've seen no presentations on what he's actually accomplished in other towns. Um, we, I've seen articles where, where other towns have said they were saving money, this does not, this plan does not even propose to save money, this pla- plan proposes to cost money, so this is, you know, there's, we haven't seen, uh, Mr. Hazelcamp's done this, he must have numbers about, like, when he did it, what was the payback in, in the other towns, if he's done it over a certain number of years, so that, that's the thing, is we, we trust, trust, you know, we do trust you, a- actually, we trust you a, a, a lot, we, we, you asked for, you know, a, a, a fifty percent increase in your, in your Town Hall budget, and we didn't, you know, maybe we pushed back, but we, we approved it, I, I, I think, I think, you know, trust, um, is something that, you know, i- i- is, is great, but we have a responsibility, we've got, we've got to do due diligence, we've got responsibility to taxpayers, and right now, we really don't know what we're going to get from this, at all, except, except, you know, you're, you're, you're promising modernization, it would be great to define what that means, uh, to define what, what modernization and what better service and all that stuff means, and put it on paper, and, you know, put some ti- you know, timeline down, um, and, 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 and then we can, you know, we can see what, you know, we can, we can translate. But right now, I, I would feel, I would feel like I, you know, we should all resign en masse if, two years from now, you know, you haven't defined what modernization means, or, you know, so we can't say that whether or not you've achieved it in two years. It would be nice if you could just put it, put it on, on paper, i- in, in detail, with some numbers, and there's probably going to be other costs associated, if you're going to start training, if you've never trained before, that's going to cost money. If there's going to be new systems that have to, that be put in place for the new people you're going to bring in, that's going to cost money. If we don't know if, who, who's going to take this, really, if we really don't know who's going to take it, then we don't know if we're wasting our money, because, you know, we, we know you, you must have an objective, and I think you could probably put it on paper, uh, i- in a spreadsheet somehow, and then we'll get pumped up about it, and we'll ask questions, detailed questions about it, and then, you know, I would assume most people would be for it, if it looks good.
Thank you, Representative Gerber, Brenda, Brenda, hang on one second, Brenda, Brenda?
Yep.
Hang on a second, I, I have to let Pam, Representative Iacono speak, she's been waiting.
Okay. Um, thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator, um, just, I, I feel like we aren't all on the same exact page, um, and for the benefit of the public, um, they may just be picking up this subject right now, and I was wondering if we could just refocus just for one moment, um, and, um, uh, just, we, we did ask that Hooker and Holcomb be present tonight to go through the numbers that they have given us, and, um, we also have a spreadsheet, um, the VRIP financial summary, that's been presented to the full body for the first time officially this evening, that people might want to ask questions on, so I think that inadvertently, we're sort of jumping ahead without giving the background information of what we have before us tonight and where we want to go, so in the interest of trying to achieve that with some continuity and clear direction, would it be possible to please, um, let's start with looking at the financial summary that we have in front of us, um, hearing from the HR Director about the numbers and the presentation that he put together for us, and then, um, once he has completed that, to please, um, have an opportunity to hear from Hooker and Holcomb, so that we can understand the methodology under which they, um, determined that this is approximately twenty million dollars between pension and OPEB, um, or- that this is approximately twenty million dollars between pension and OPEB, um, or if Mr. Hazelcamp prefers to defer to them first, however administration sees fit. But I feel like we're jumping into a discussion, um, that's hard to follow since we haven't started with the presentation of the financial summary that was actually never really officially discussed, um, in public at this particular juncture.
Okay. Um, I think that's a good point. Um, if we could, we, we are eager to hear from Hooker and Holcomb if Mr. Hazelcamp could just run through his numbers that I did share with the RTM. Um, and then it would be good to hear from Hooker and Holcomb. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll be work, I assume you folks have received the sheet. That's what I'm summarizing, the sheet, uh, that was prepared after the last RTM meeting. I'll just go through it so everybody sort of understands how the, uh, numbers were derived. You'll see that there's really, uh, a two-year assessment, just for impacts on this fiscal year and projections on next fiscal year. So there, you'll see that there's two columns that are in pink at the top, and then two columns that are in green. So the first two columns are related to this budget year, and the second two columns are related to next budget year. So let me just go through. So the components of the analysis are on the left-hand side, uh, and I'll just, uh, summarize them. So the vacation payout, which is required by the various union contracts, uh, and it, whoops, sorry. So that's, uh, there was a calculation. I had, uh, all the vacations, um, given to me, all the accruals were given to me. Some of the contracts have provisions where we have to add two weeks when people retire. At the end of all that analysis, the liability was approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I knew that was gonna be a fairly large number. Uh, so in the negotiations that we had with the unions, uh, part of the agreements that are in front of you splits that cost across this fiscal year when they retire and next fiscal year, uh, when the next fiscal year occurs. So that number is the first number there, which is three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. They have to understand that that number assumes every person is leaving. We know that's not gonna be the case. Uh, I have said repeatedly, and I think at the end of the day, we'll find out if we get this approved, that somewhere between twenty and thirty people will likely elect the package. Which is why when you go to the second column, just to give you some guidance in the process to understand what I really think the actual cost will be at the end of the day, I assumed a number in between, uh, full payout of the fifty-some-odd people that are leaving, and what would it be if it was approximately half of them? So if you do that, uh, at least relative to the vacation time, the impact for vacation in this particular budget year would be approximately a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and change. Uh, and then in the out year, the same analysis for vacation, um, for the two years. And I've had questions about, you know, long-term costs and short-term costs, and what does or doesn't entail long-term versus short-term. That's a liability that's done after the two years of this program. There's no, there's no additional payments on that particular line item. The next line item, in some sense, I regret because it's sort of hard to, uh, to explain. When people, right now, the town's pension system is closed. All these folks are in the town's pension system. So when they leave, the people that we hire get covered by a 401A plan. You and the private sector will certainly recognize it as a, it's equivalent to a 401K plan, where the town will, um, provide a match of five percent to the new hires. So just so that you would understand the budget implication for that, um, I just decided to reflect it in the, um, in the spreadsheet. Uh, the ninety-nine thousand dollars is, is an assessment that if we replace all of the folks, um, for half of a year, it's approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars of contributions that the town would make that aren't in a budget because we didn't assume this, certainly last year wasn't assumed that these people would be there. That number carries forward in the out years because obviously the new people are hired for full years. Um, and then, you know, people have asked me about the out years. In some sense, that is an expense that's going to happen no matter what. Every single new person that the town hires will be in the new 401A plan. So if, in theory, this plan never came to existence, and we had people, four or five people retire over the next four or five years, that cost is gonna be the same because after four or five years, everybody would be in the 401A plan. So that's why, um, you know, there's ongoing costs associated with that, but it's not really necessarily directly related to this plan. I just wanted to show it, uh, in this particular spreadsheet so you understood that there is a kickoff in this budget year to reflect those costs. The next two line items are the, um, the big numbers related to this particular package. Um, the budget numbers have already been set for this year so that the pension and impact to the trust-
Madam Moderator, before Mr. Hazelcamp moves on to the next items, do you mind if I ask him a couple of questions that relate only to what he just spoke about?
Um, yeah, that makes sense, sure.
Okay. Um, because I wanted to ask about the direct impact on this fiscal year and, um, where that money is coming out of for our budget. So you outlined the vacation comp time and the 401A, and both of those costs are going to need to be paid for this fiscal year.
Yeah, I know, I, I think in my response to you, I, I, this afternoon, I indicated, I think Mr. Schmidt, uh, responded to that, so I'll let him address that.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Jared Schmidt, I'm the new CFO for the town. Um, and I, so I'll, I'll get into the, to your question directly. Um, so the, if you look at the sheet, and let's focus on the second column, um, so if fifty percent of people elect, when you, when you look at those costs in the first two rows, the hundred and eighty-five thousand and the forty-nine thousand, those are just, that's, that's one half of the picture. Uh, there, I, I know, it's been talked about that there, um, haven't been, there aren't any savings reflected in here. But if you look down toward the bottom, there is a, a row for savings as well related to the, uh, difference between the people who are taking the V-RIP and the, the new people who are coming on. So there are savings related to it. So you have to, it's, it's hard to take, we can't just take the hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and look at that alone and say, how are you covering that? This is an entire package. This is, this is a, an entire plan. And you have to look at it in that way. So when you, you look at the hundred and eighty-five thousand, you look at the, the next line, forty-nine thousand for the current year, and then you have to look at that offset by the savings, if you go down below, of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So that's, that's part of it. And when you take into account those things, the remaining shortfall, if you will, is seventy-six thousand dollars this year. So if you wanna talk about what, um, you know, what we need to find within the budget for this year, that's, that's the, that's the bottom line. It's seventy-six thousand dollars.
But it could be a hundred and fifty-four thousand, right?
If every single person takes it. That, that's the difference between the two columns. If every, if every one of the fifty-five people takes it.
But we don't plan for the worst-case scenario? I just would like to know where that would come out of our budget because I know we're really tight.
Okay. So there, one of the, one of the places that it could come from is that there will be, th- this plan assumes that all these, uh, new positions are gonna be refilled. So in that sense, it is a worst-case scenario. It assumes that they would all be refilled immediately, starting January first. In reality, that's not what's gonna happen. There's gonna be a lag, uh, you know, given the, the, the large number of people who are leaving town service at one time. We will not be able to refill all those, uh, immediately on, just by January first. So there are gonna be vacancies in these positions for, uh, realistically for at least a month. And so what that amounts to is, if you take half of these, let's say, let's stick with that scenario where fifty percent elect, because that's, you know, the, probably the most reasonable outcome here. If you stick with that, what that amounts to is approximately, uh, you know, based on some of the salaries that we know, is approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in savings from the, just from the vacancy. So that's one way. And if you look at that compared to the, the bottom line of seventy-six thousand dollars, obviously that's, you know, that's, that's a significant amount more of savings in the current year that would result. And if you go up to, if you go up, and, and let's say a hundred percent of them took it, you would have, uh, you would have more costs, but you'd also have more savings because you'd have more vacant positions that, and there would be more, more savings from that.
But, I'm sorry, but my understanding is, if this deal is accepted, starting, like, as soon as November first hits, we make this payout immediately for vacation and comp time. So I just would like to know where exactly this is gonna come out of our budget. I, I understand you're saying there's going to be some savings realized, but that seems like it's gonna occur over the course of time. And so, uh, my understanding is, if we go off of our budget, um, either the Board of Finance has to make an approval of some kind of transfer, or, I'm not exactly sure how it works, but I, I would really like to understand where that would come from.
So again, the, the savings from the vacancy may, you know, as far as the cash flow, uh, issue, we may not see the savings for a couple months after that, after the vacancies are created and after the people, uh, opt into the program. But over the course of the year-long budget, we will have that, we will have that savings. And it's not something that has to create, it's not a policy that somebody, obviously you have to, uh, you know, approve this plan for it to be created, but these vacancies are gonna happen naturally. And so there, you're, you're going to have that savings because we're not gonna be able to refill these positions immediately. And, and, yeah, just to emphasize the point that the vacation time, these payouts are spread out over two years. So you take, you would have half the, if half the people are taking it, you would have half of the total cost spread out over two years, which is what-
Yes, the, the chart indicates that because it breaks it down into a twenty-twenty-one impact and a twenty-twenty-two impact, right? So we're looking at the potential cost, um, at the outside of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, and your lower estimate would be seventy-seven thousand, um, if fifty elect. And that's all in this fiscal year that we have to count for this year. I understand what you're saying, but that's, that's, that's all, that's written out in the chart for next year. That's a different issue.
I'm sorry, was there a question? Was there a question?
Uh, yeah, I, I just meant that you didn't have to explain that aspect of it because it's, we, we already, we're, we're, I, I'm just really grappling with where that, um, a hundred and fifty-four thousand is taken out of, because like I'm to- I'm really into transparency and seeing it in the budget and having the taxpayers see it in the budget. And I just really want you to identify where that would come out of. I, I don't like banking on the vac- vacancies and not filling them. To me, that also, it worries me that you're, there's going to be a reduction in service levels.
So there, as I mentioned, the vacancies- Yeah, the vacancies are, are what create the savings. I don't know how to, uh, how to say it another way, but the, the vacancies are gonna happen naturally. We have them, yeah, under this plan because there's six months worth, worth of savings in here. I'm sorry, six months worth of, of additional cost in here. Uh, so it, this assumes that those new hires would come in January first. That's just not gonna happen.
Okay, I just thought that that was taken into account when he did the estimate for the savings summary, and so there's like a total-
I'll let him go into the, go into that more detail, but that savings that's reflected in here has more to do with the positions that are, uh, the people that, that take the V-RIP and the position, and the people that come in to refill them. And there's a difference there because you have people who are at that high level of salary, and then you're bringing in to replace them, to refill those positions, people at a lower salary. So that's what, that, that's accounting just strictly for the dollar amounts, the mu- dollar amount difference in the salaries. What I'm talking about is the timing difference. And the timing difference is what creates the vacancies and the savings from the vacancies, which are not reflected in here. I'll let Mr. Hazelcamp come up, and he can, uh, if he wants to talk more about the, um, about the difference in salaries and how he got to those.
Actually, if you wouldn't mind just waiting a second, I, I, there are a couple of other representatives who had questions that I think are related to, um, what you were just saying. Representative Spolier? I think you're on mute, Marcy.
Sorry, Marcy Spolier, District Four. Um, I'm not sure if this is for you or, uh, Mr. Hazelcamp, but, um, I'm under the impression when you're speaking of possibly having these vacancies occur for one month, and then this is where you're figuring the, um, difference, where we can make up some of that money. I thought in the, um, information we were provided, they said that we would consider hiring some of these people back, so, if we needed them. So I'm really concerned about the level of service that we're losing during that time that we're not having these people. And if there are services that are needed, we're hiring these people back that were, you know, that are taking this package, so we're really not saving that money, is, is my understanding from, from what you're saying? You're saying that we're saving that money because there'd be a period of time where no one's doing that job? But I'm not under that impression from the information that was provided to us.
Okay, I'm gonna let Mr. Hazelcamp answer this question.
Yeah, so I think that the question really goes to some of the transition costs. Um, the issue of people coming back, we have, as part of the agreement, as I think I've articulated before, that there is some ability to bring back some critical people to fill critical needs. So, but that's not gonna be usually on a full-time basis, it's gonna be on a part-time basis, it's gonna be on a temporary basis. So I think there'll be, you know, there's not gonna be some huge impact on services because it's our, it's our goal and it's our obligation to make sure that that doesn't occur. And, um, that's my job to make sure that doesn't happen. So it doesn't affect that there will be, um, certainly a transitional period where there will be some weeks where folks are, uh, not in a full-time status, and we haven't full, or we haven't filled in a full-time status, that there will be the savings that, um, Jared outlined, um, because of the delay and not being able to fill everybody at once. Certainly, there is, uh, our expectation that with the abilities of the department has, that we will put together plans to deal with the transition so that there is no reduction in services.
Thank you. Um, Representative Costilli?
Oh, sorry, I'm double muted. Um, Sharon Costilli, District Three. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I understood too, um, you know, for this year, um, the impact on our pension and OPEB contributions, like even that of savings is either gonna be half a million a year to a million a year? And that's something, like right now, our OPEB's funded at around like, I don't know, thirty percent, I think? And so we, we choose to fund that like as a budget line item, right? Like as a cat, like a- So that's gonna be another line item in the budget that we're gonna have to come up with for this year? The half a million to a million? Is that this year's expenditure?
No. No, and that, the spreadsheet is, I think that's why we stopped the reviewing the spreadsheet. This fiscal year, you'll see zeros associated with the pension increase and OPEB trust impact because those would not hit until next, next fiscal year.
Oh, they don't hit till next year?
Yeah, it's a, it's an expense that, once the actuaries come up and do the numbers for next year, uh, that we'll expect the increase that's in the second column. So there, there is a, an assessment in the second column that is next fiscal year, which shows the impact of what we expect for the pension, uh, contribution increase, and the OPEB liability.
Okay, so even though the cost is going up effective immediately, we'll fund it like retroactively, starting July one?
Yeah, it's actually, no, it's prospectively that you'll fund it, not retroactively.
Yeah, it's actually, no, it's prospectively that you'll fund it, not retroactively. Next July, not...
But our, our costs start to go up, whatever, I don't get is our costs start to go up November one, right? So there's a cost increase from November one to July one. I don't know where that's indicated here. Because it's going to cost us more money because we're paying for retiree medical and a sweetener on people where we haven't funded that yet. So isn't there another cost for that little tail of time between November first and July first? Or do I not understand that properly?
There's not a tail for that. There's not a cost, there's not a cost associated with that. The way the actuaries do it is they figure out what the liability is, which is on the sheet there at, uh, the nine million dollars and change. They then said this liability will be paid off over the next twenty-one years. The commencement date for that is next July. So from July, of course, two thousand twenty-one forward, for the next twenty-one years, that's the amortization period, and that calculation is done for next year. So those costs are not in this current fiscal year.
Okay, but regardless of how we amortize it, there is a real cost associated with November one to July one, regardless of the fact that there's a lag in how we account for it?
There's, there's not a budget impact in this year.
Okay. Sorry about that, I appreciate it. I get a little lost in the numbers.
That's all right. So I, I, we started to talk about that, so why don't I quickly go through those? So everybody understands those, because those are obviously the two biggest, two biggest items on the sheet. So we had the analysis done of the pension increase. And you'll see, as I just mentioned, there's no, um, actuarial, I'm sorry, there's no contribution increase this, this year. Next year, if you look, the contribution if all folks elected is one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars and change. If half the people, uh, leave, we estimate that to be about two hundred and sixteen thousand. Those are numbers that were determined by the actuary, and that's based on the liability numbers in the middle of the sheet there, which show that the liability for the period, uh, for the pension is the nine point five, and the health insurance, uh, to the OPEP is nine point seven. So what they do is they calculate, and they're on the call, so you can, they would be better to articulate this than I am. But in essence, we had them take the, uh, the plan provisions related to the incentive plan. We told them, here's what we're, uh, providing. We then asked them, I provide them with the data associated with the employee groups. They then calculate based on that data what the liability will be to the town, or the different options. They come up with a number, which is the number in the middle, and then they tell us that in order to fund that based on our current, current actuarial assumptions, it gets amortized over twenty-one years, and that's how it gets paid off. You know, it's, I think the analogy is it's a mortgage, uh, you take out a mortgage and you pay it off over time. Uh, and that's sort of my layman's, uh, approach to sort of how that works. But if you have more detailed questions on that, certainly, uh, the actuaries are certainly more knowledgeable. Uh, but that's the analysis. So we have out, in the out-years, the two numbers, um, which is the, everybody leaves impact, and then half the people impact, so if you assume half the people impact, you're talking about, um, a little over five hundred thousand dollars. That's the two numbers in the far column, the fifty percent of the people elect. You know, let's be honest. I know we, we sort of focus because the numbers are large where it says all. There's no way on this earth that we're going to have everyone take the package. So I understand, and we, we do it this way so that you guys can have all the information you need. It's just not realistic for planning purposes for us to assume that it's going to be that number. Um, particularly because we have a pretty good sense it's going to be in between that number, which is why we've given you the numbers, the fifty percent of the people elect. So then, you can see, I totaled the cost for those different, um, components. And of course, their, uh, numbers, you know, are what they are, they're indicated in the total cost. And I'll talk a little bit just quickly about how the savings were derived, because I know that was mentioned. So the only, uh, I think this came up as a question the first time we met. Uh, because we hadn't, um, we hadn't done an analysis of sort of the savings component. And, you know, I just got a question when I was at another meeting about, you know, this assumption and why are we doing this? If in fact, you're not going to replace all these people? Well, because we wanted to give you some guidance as to what it really, what happens when we do this. Uh, so the assumption I made was the following. We have fifty-five people whose salaries are X, right? Uh, I have fifty-five people that in theory, if I'm going to have to, I'm going to replace them, just for this example. And I assumed for the THIA group, which is the clerical and administrative, and the DPW group, that those people would be by and large hired at step one. Because there really is not a, um, a driver that would require us in most cases to hire them anything but on step one. If you take, and then for PETA, which is the last of the groups, I did a slightly different assumption, mostly because if you look at the wage scale, in PETA, um, we're just not realistically going to be able to recruit, uh, below, certainly at step one. So I assumed that the hiring would be done at step three. And then I took the current salaries, subtracted against those figures, to come up with what the savings were. If everyone left and then approximately half the people left. And that's associated with the gray, the, um, green number that says savings. The analysis of that is down below. So you can see the different groups. Uh, you can see what the, um, we project as the savings based on that analysis. There's a six-month, which is basically this year. And then for next year, uh, the savings is the, uh, larger number for six months. So it's, it's illustrative, it was because someone asked me that at one of our meetings, and I provided it. Obviously, if we don't hire fifty-five people, if it's less, there's potentially more savings if we don't fill all the positions. But I wanted to sort of give you some way for me to sort of come up with a methodology that there is a significant spread between what we expect, the people are being paid if they leave, and the people that we will be hiring, and that's the reflected savings number that's on that sheet. And I can go through anything?
Um, thanks, Jim. Um, Representative Gerber has a question?
Sure.
Yeah, hi, I guess between, um, yourself and then maybe Hooker and Holcomb. I, I, I just, uh, looking at the numbers in the last, um, actuarial report from Hooker and Holcomb, I think, I think we had a pension shortfall of about forty million and a OPEP shortfall of about thirty-nine million. Does that sound right?
I couldn't speak to the numbers, that's something I, you can certainly ask them. I don't, that's not within, I haven't been here long enough to know what pension, uh, fundings are. I think we're eighty-three percent funded or something like that.
H and H is on the line?
Yeah, they, they are available to ask that question if you'd like, but if you want to have, well, my question, maybe you can bring them on. That's up to you folks, obviously.
Oh, they're, they're not on?
Bill, they, they are, I think they're at Town Hall, correct? Is that right, Jim?
No, they're dialing.
Oh, they're dialing, okay. So I, I was hoping they could give us a little overview of, of, um, their calculations and such.
So are, are, like, do you see them on? Like, are they listening?
Yes, they're on.
Okay, so my question for them, if they're listening, is it looks like, um, we're under, we're, we're only eighty, you know, eighty-four percent funded on pension as of the last fiscal year, and, and we were, um, I think, um, yeah, like, I, I believe it was like thirty-something, thirty percent funded on OPEP? So, and, and I think what you're, you're saying, uh, is that the liability is, obviously it's going to go up as soon as this thing is completed. Uh, we're not going to fund it, we're going to pay it off over an extended period of time, like a mortgage, but the liability will be obviously incorporated into the actuarial report. So we can assume if everyone takes it, the liability, one, one liability go up by nine point five million, the other, OPEP will go up by nine point seven million. So initially, we're going to be underfunded by, um, if it's thirty-nine million on OPEP, we're now going to be underfunded by closer to fifty million. And if we're, um, unfunded forty million on pension, it's going to be closer to fifty million as well. Um, and I assume they're using the same assumptions that they used in the last actuarial report. They were using seven percent, I believe, uh, for, um, a yield for the portfolio. And if that's the case, they've also, they've also, uh, explained in their last actuarial report that that's too high, that it's already too high and it's probably going to come down, uh, a fair amount, uh, in, in the future. And probably with COVID and, and interest rates being depressed, it's probably going to come down more, I would, I would guess. So if they could comment on that, that, you know, if they're using seven percent, that would imply that, that they're already sort of under, um, you know, that the number they're giving us is, is probably too low. Um, but that, if that's what they're doing, that's what they're doing for the rest of the, but, you know, we, hopefully when they discuss this with the pension board, they, they go through some more realistic, um, uh, yield, yield, you know, uh, asset yield numbers. And on that line, I hope with, with the pension board, they're also going to discuss, but I'd like to throw it out, you know, just for thought now, that if that number, seven percent is too, too high, which they've said it is, um, that if they lower that rate for the whole portfolio, we're looking at a pretty big hit for the overall portfolio. And that's been discussed a lot, you know, over the last years. So we already know we're looking at a, you know, a hit on, on, on the yield of the portfolio, um, that's going to come through. And I believe there's also a two million mortality improvement hit that we're going to see recurring, uh, for, for several years. So hopefully they'll, they'll add all this stuff up with some sensitivities. So when we come back, we, or that they discuss, uh, not just the calculation using old, the older assumptions, but also the calculation using, you know, a discount rate or, or asset earnings rate that's probably more realistic so that we'll be prepared to see larger numbers come through, um, than, than will be reported by you guys. You know, in, in the estimate. And if they're on, it would be nice to hear their voice.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, if Hooker and Holcomb could give a little overview and including responses to Representative Gerber's questions? Is that possible?
We see him on there, Karen, but I don't know if he has to unmute himself, or you have to unmute him?
Is that Steven? Steven Chikarada?
Define, yeah.
There you go.
Define, you hear us type something.
Now we, now we hear you.
Okay. Um, there's a whole lot of questions out there and answers I can, I try to shed some light on. Um, you want me to answer Mr. Gerber's last remark?
Well, I wonder if you...
Why don't you start with the asset, or, yeah?
Yeah, okay, so every year, when I meet with the pension board, we do talk about the discount rate. Oh, go ahead, moderator. Do you want to say something first?
Well, I was just, um, following on to, to a, a comment that Representative Iacono made before. I wonder if it would make sense to, to hang on to Mr. Gerber's questions, but maybe give a very brief, like, sense of, of what you did in analyzing this, just so we and, and any members of the public listening have a sense of that. I think that would be helpful.
Yep, so big picture, I'll try to clear it up so it's not so muddy. Um, so basically, the town comes and asks, hey, we're thinking about offering an early retirement incentive program to, you know, free up some, or some positions or whatnot. So basically, they give us the, the data, and they, they identify the people who would potentially be eligible to go out early, um, or with some incentive, and then we take them and, but we value them. We say, okay, this is what it costs right now, not doing anything as, as if they've remained in the pension plan. So then we say, okay, what are the incentives you're going to try to give them to get them to be enticed to retire now? Um, so we took those incentives. One was an unreduced early retirement benefit, and the other was giving people that are eligible for normal retirement, uh, a six percent increase to their final average earnings. So we took that and come up with the numbers. So that, that's kind of plain and simple. We, that means everybody goes from being active today to being retired. And we value them as a retiree to see what their, their total liability is. And then we take that, that change in liability and amortize that, because that's really the, the added cost of the plan long-term. And that number is about, between the OPEB, as well as the pension, is about nineteen and a half million, nineteen million, somewhere around there. And we always use, like, to take a look at the worst case, you know? I know Jim said it's unrealistic that everybody takes it, but it's easier to take a, look at the worst-case scenario. That way you're prepared for the worst, and you know what the, the ceiling is kind of on your added costs. So we kind of look at that way. Okay? Um, and the OPEB is a little trickier because, oh, is that good, right there?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
I can kind of comment a little bit on some of the savings as well. So you always, well, let's first say, um, Sharon's question on, on how it gets recognized in the savings. So we're going to, we're going to be doing the seven-one-twenty valuation. And that's going to develop, on the pension side, that's going to develop the contribution requirement that's due fiscal year ending six-thirty-twenty-two. So this E-RIP won't, you won't see this for a little while, right? Because we won't measure, if, if this happens, say, January first of twenty-one, well, we won't really know that. We won't measure the impact until seven-one-twenty-one. And that will be the, for the fiscal year ending six-thirty-twenty-three. So that's really when you're going to see the first increase of the amortized over twenty years of the increase of the liability. Okay, so that's for the pension. On the OPEB, it's a little longer because we're going to be doing the valuation this year. That's going to develop the contributions for six-thirty-twenty-two and six-thirty-twenty-three. The E-RIP won't have happened by that, you know, because we're already measuring that date. So it really won't get measured until seven-one-twenty-two. So that's not going, you, you won't see the impact on the OPEB for a couple more years unless you tr, just decide to early adopt it and reflect it in that, in that ADAX for one of those years. Okay? Does that help you, Sharon, hopefully?
Yes, that she's saying, yes, yes.
Another thing that both Jim and, um, Jerry were kind of talking about on the immediate savings and how you see that. So when you always hear all these other towns doing an E-RIP, they, they're usually trying to fi, figure out the short-term savings. Because most towns understand that there's a long-term cost to giving an E-RIP. As we know, it's about nineteen million or so, right? But the short-term savings really tend to be in that salary. So if we look at all these people, their salary is about four and a half to five million. So if they all left, that would be the savings. That savings would be, the immediate savings that would be in this fiscal year because you're actually doing compensation on an annual basis, right? As opposed to where you're funding the pension, it's, it's kind of lagged a year or two. So that four and a half, five million would be an immediate saving less anybody you replace with, right? So presumably, some of those people won't get replaced because, as, uh, what's, I forget, Kudwick said, that, that some of the positions are overlapping, so maybe you don't replace all fifty people or so that go out. So you get some of that saving. Um, you, obviously, you lose a little bit of the savings when you rehire people. Maybe there are two-thirds of what you paid out, what, what you saved in total salary. Another thing to think about in, in the short-term savings as well is, as, um, Jim might have said, that it's a, on your four-oh-one-eight plan, it's a five percent employer match. On the pension side, it's probably about eight to eight and a half percent. So you're going to get that three percent spread as, as additional savings on comp. Okay? So those are, I think, some of the key points I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Hopefully, answered seventy, eighty percent of your questions, I'm hoping?
Um, I guess if you could respond to Representative Gerber's questions then, about the seven percent, uh, yield and...
Yeah, can I, can I ask the clarifying question on what, on what Stefan just said? When you talk about amortizing, though, um, over twenty years or whatever, um, your actuarial report will include, will, will include the discounted value of the, of the total liability, right?
Correct. So it's going to be whatever interest rate we're using.
The amortization is just the funding. And, and, okay. So, so you, you calculated it seven percent, which you've recommended, I think, that we reduce that?
And, and we've had this conversation every year. Um, we always show them a couple of alternative rates. You know, last year, I think I did six and three-quarters as well as six and a half. I don't know if I did six and a quarter or not. I, I might have this past year as well. So we always show them. The talk in this last meeting, they chose, they wanted to focus more on the mortality table, which we ultimately adopted, which is fine, as opposed to the interest rate because the thought was they just hired a new investment firm. Um, so they didn't, weren't sure where the rates are going to fall, you know, based on they're going to do reallocations and, you know, that each firm's going to have their own capital market assumptions based on how they invest the assets. So we're going to look at that this year, and I would assume we'd probably go down a little bit. I don't know. That's not my call. That's up to the pension board where they want to go with that.
And the mortality is about two million per year, right?
That's about, yeah, one point eight, somewhere in that number, yes. And obviously, we like, you know, we like, go ahead.
No, go, go ahead.
I was just going to say, ideally, we like, we like the asset performance to help ease the pain of that over time. You know, obviously, this year it's been up and down. It's going to be whatever day we measured the assets at is how well they either did well or did bad. I don't know what it was exactly on six-thirty, um, but that's how we're going to usually, that's how we do the snapshot.
Right, and then the other question I had, uh, was pension was about a forty million dollar underfunded, uh, so we're about eighty-four percent funded. And the, uh, so that goes up. And, and so, any, any increase on, on day one that this liability is put up is going to, let's say... And- and so, any- any increase on- on day one that this liability is put up is going to, let's say, let's say it is the full nine point five, we know it's going to be lower than that. So, that would take the forty to fifty million underfunded, and we'd probably go down to closer to eighty percent funded, right?
Yeah, and I don't know, because I haven't seen where the assets are right now, you know, so may- maybe it is, maybe it isn't. Again, remember, if we're doing the E-RIP, it's not going to get recognized until seven one twenty. So, it'll be really that funded percentage at that point in time, what that ultimate amortization is of the unfunded. So, hopefully, from now until next June thirtieth, the plan does very well on the asset side.
Right, but we're already assuming-
Assuming the E-RIP goes through, okay.
Yeah, okay, and- and so, and- and for, um, OPEB is about a forty million, or thirty-eight point nine million shortfall. And you add nine point seven to that, it's about forty- forty-nine million. So, it takes us from thirty-nine percent funded to, um, about thirty-four percent funded.
Yeah, and we'll know that in a few months. We'll- we'll have a better snapshot, and we'll update it as a seven one twenty.
Okay, and do you, uh, just, I mean, I- I- I guess I really shouldn't be getting into it, but- but I am curious what, you know, do you have a sense for what every one percent under or over, whatever, a one percent difference from the seven percent assumed yield? What's every one percent, um, um, amount to in terms of the pension cost?
Bear with me a sec, let me see if I have that, if I can find the number real quick. Uh, let's see. Where did I put those numbers? Shoot. Bear with me, sorry, I gotta, just try to find the presentation I did that had those in there. I should have- I should have found that before while you guys were all talking. I didn't think of it, my bad. I don't- I don't see them, I don't have them at my fingertips, but I'll try to find them while I'm on the phone.
I'm sure- I'm sure you'll discuss that with the, uh, guys on the pension.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, we- that's something we always focus on.
Can I ask a question, um, Representative Gerber? I don't know if you had more, but I just wanted to make sure I understood something you just said, Stefan. Uh, but the immediate savings will be about four and a half to five million. Then, when people are rehired, it'll- it'll be maybe two-thirds less than that. It'll be maybe a third of that net after the new people have paid their salaries.
Yeah, so the savings is whoever retires, you don't have that immediate cost. And- and you're just your current calendar year, right? Because you're not paying that out this year, right? So, you- so assume that they- they go out Sep- January first, right? So, that's two and a half million, whatever year, that's the next six months of the fiscal year, you'll save half of that five million, we'll call it, that's two and a half. Of that two and a half, how many of those people get replaced in that time period? And that- that's kind of eat away, as- as well as you said, um, you do the two years of the payouts of PTO and whatnot severance pay. So, that'll eat into that as well, right? That's some of your immediate savings.
So, the net savings won't be very high. Mm-hmm, okay.
And there- and there could be other savings as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, thank you, Representative Carson?
Hi, Laura Carson, District Four. I just have, um, just a question about that. What was it? I just want to understand the genesis of proposal.
It's hard to hear you, Laura. Sorry, go ahead.
Is that better now?
Cutting in. Yes, that is better, thank you.
Is that better? I just want to understand the genesis of this whole proposal, like, did this come from- from Mr. Hazelcamp to say we could streamline our government, save money? Save money, and at the same time, move to the twenty-first century and modernize and have this cutting-edge skill? And who would have, and who would have the expertise to do that?
Um, that's not a question for me, I think that's- that's an HR question, I think.
Yeah, that is a question from Mr. Hazelcamp, I think.
You're not the agent. Oh, who's? Smith, oh, yep.
Want to respond to that?
No, we're-
You want me to respond to that?
Yes, please, Jim.
So-
You just want to get an understanding?
Sure, the- the initial discussion I had when I got here with First Select Woman was this desire to streamline the government and make it more efficient. And then, as I outlined in the memo, obviously, lots of things got interrupted with that activity. So, when we got around to the more formal discussions about what do we want the government to look like, and what's going to be the operational structure of the town, there's really only two ways to deal with that. You can go out and find positions you think should be eliminated and just do straight layoffs and reorganize in that way. Or, as I've done in other towns and other folks, because nobody really likes to do that. It's not, uh, I don't think it's the path of first resort, uh, which is why many communities elect to do the kinds of things that we're doing, which is the need to, uh, potentially restructure and have folks move on who might otherwise want to move on, and have us have the ability then to take some of those vacancies and make the organization the way we want it to make. But it's important to understand, there's- there, uh, the discussion about sort of how we get here is it was a long and difficult discussion, because it involves layoffs of folks. It involves the ability or inability to have people bump, and what is hap- what happens to the organization when folks are in one department and that position gets eliminated, and they have seniority, and they bump elsewhere where they might not know anything else about that department. So, it's very disruptive to come in and say, okay, let's reorganize by eliminating people. So, most places go and say, look, we'll spend and we'll invest in the town, and we'll invest in the employees, uh, in a way that allows them to move on, uh, in a way that's compassionate and allows the town the flexibility to sort of restructure itself. In some sense, that's the simplest rationale that we get to, if you can't easily reorganize. And that's the, um, you know, I know somebody asked, I don't know who asked the question. Yes, I have done this in four towns, this is the fourth town. I believe I did it twice in Stanford, it's been a while, I don't remember. I did it once in Trumbull, and I've done it now here, and I did it in Norwalk. And every single town does it for different reasons. You know, in Stanford, it was actually just a restructure, period. There was no desire, there was no, let's save money, because that's not what their objective was. Their objective was to totally reorganize the, uh, departments, because they had gone through charter change, and they had restructured their departments under the charter, and they wanted a significant amount of people to move on. In Norwalk, it was more economic, and somebody asked the question about tracking of the results. It's not typically, and it wasn't in any of these instances, my purview, to track the results of the early retirement programs. Uh, and then finally, in Trumbull, it was done because the First Select- Selectman wanted some folks to be moved on, because in some sense, some of them didn't share his vision of the way he wanted the town run. So, every, and in Trumbull, it was, you know, like, I- I said this at the LNA meeting, and I'll just repeat myself. Every town has different circumstances to how they get there, right? Pay- the pension system in Stanford was two hundred percent funded. The- that was not the case in Norwalk, but they did it anyway. And in Trumbull, we didn't touch the pension system. We- they don't have retiree health insurance, so the carrot in Trumbull was to deal with retiree health insurance and providing that. So, every circumstance that I've dealt with is sort of, it's unique to the municipality, because municipalities have different systems, different union contracts, and different reasons, it's the reasons they want to do early retirement. But, it's all from my perspective to avoid the most uncomfortable thing that I've ever done in my life, which is to sit across somebody and tell them their position is going to be eliminated. It's incredibly painful exercise when that has to be done.
Thank you. Should I ask Mr. Chakerta to just explain how he goes about modernizing the whole, all these departments? Who's in charge of that? Are you? Are you the department?
Man, that's- that's a HR question. I'm a numbers guy.
I didn't hear the question, do you want to answer?
Who? Oh, I thought that was from Jill, sorry.
Uh, Representative-
Was that from Brenda, thank you.
Hi, um, uh, that would be me and my administration, working with our department head to- to make those reorganization decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, you're muted.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Um, Representative Vergara? Did you have a question?
Um, I, yes, I did, thank you. I, Jill Vergara, District Seven. I originally had a question for Mr. Chakerta, and I- I, but another question came up for, um, Mr. Hazelcamp. So, um, I'd like to do, uh, I'd like to ask both, if that's okay? Um, to Mr. Hazelcamp, uh, you just mentioned the different towns that you were involved in with these restructurings, and, um, I know that you mentioned the three. It was Stamford, Norwalk, and Trumbull. Um, so I- I, it would be really helpful to have an understanding of what the numbers were before and after the restructurings for- for those- for those pensions. I'm just uncomfortable with the idea of doing a restructuring like this and having ballooning liabilities and not getting anything out of it. I mean, it just all sounds like costs and no benefits.
Oh, I don't think that-
I'd like to hear what happens in the, I- if possible, it'd be really great to see comparisons to other towns.
There's- there's going to be no way to obtain that, I- I don't have any recollection of it. As I just mentioned, Trumbull was not a pension change, so it was a retirement, uh, health change. Uh, and because at the time, I don't know if they had an OPEB trust, I don't believe there was an analysis on the, um, healthcare liabilities. So, and I, it's been, I don't know, ten years since I've been in, uh, Norwalk, and twenty-something since I've been in Stanford, so, and I don't, I wouldn't even have any of that information available, um, for a comparative purpose.
Okay, I- again, I just want to reiterate that it's, it sounds odd to spend so much money. It's so costly, and we're not getting anything out of it. Usually, it's to reduce the long-term liability, and none of that's happening. But can I move over to Mr. Chakerta? I had a question about a statement he made about when, um, the liability would hit. Um, Mr. Chakerta, uh, answered one of Representative Gerber's questions and noted that it would be two to three years before this liability hits. And I am confused about that statement, because we know about this liability right now. I don't understand why we wouldn't incorporate it immediately into our calculations for what we need, we know we owe, um, in our, both in budgeting and just for, like, a picture of our long-term liabilities. So, um, it just seems like that's just kind of covering your eyes to something you know that's there, which sounds very similar to what the state was doing. And I really don't want to have anything, I just, it sounds, I- I- I would like to have that liability incorporated. We know we have it, so I- I'd like you to address why you think it's two to three years before it's incorporated.
That's just typically, that's how towns budget for in the valuation cycle. Um, that doesn't mean you have to do that, that just gives towns ample time to prepare for it. Um, there's no- there's no, there's no rules to say you can't pre-fund it. I mean, you could always put more money into the pension plan, there's- there's no rules against that. Um, you know, they- they do frown on you when you underfund the plan, but they don't frown on you when you overfund. So, you can certainly put more, put it, prepay it. There's no reason you can't do that, and you can certainly, we can certainly adjust the ADEX after the valuation date to account for that. There's- there's no reason we couldn't do that. You know, that's- that's just the matter, I'm just saying, that's what gets published in the valuation report, that's kind of the lag, there's a little bit of a lag on that. Um, that's all I was saying, I'm not saying you- you ha- that's how you- you have to follow that, you know. Like I said, you could always pre-fund, no rules against that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and I was just going to kind of answer your other question, that you- you- you asked for other E-RIP studies. The problem with that is, most likely, you're going to be comparing apples and oranges, because, you know, every town's going to have their own agenda, and they're going to offer their own carrots to kind of, you know, enhance people to go out. So, you- you know, it's going to be hard to kind of get a fair comparison, you know, straight-line comparison from one to the other, is just my thought.
I'd like to know if there's any other town that's ever offered this without any kind of benefit savings in the long term? That stands out to me as very odd.
Um, Representative Garzko?
Without looking at the experience from each one, that after they've done it, I wouldn't be able to tell you that. I mean, I've done a few over the years, um, and most of them, a lot of them tend to go for short-term. As Jim had said, you know, Trumbull had a different, you know, reason. Stamford was a long time ago, um, just, you know, tends to be restructuring or whatnot. You know, so every- every- every reason is different, you know, what you're trying to do.
Could I offer a response to that inquiry?
Uh, yes.
So, I think there was a question about any other town that's done this, and, you know, I hate to, here's the news in that regard. This town is the only one that I know where they had an early retirement package with no analysis and no pe- no- no approvals. So, the question about has this been done, uh, yeah, has it done without analysis? Yes, this town did it two thousand nine without any analysis. Offered it to twenty, fifty-some odd people, and twenty-six people took the- took the early retirement, and we're currently paying for that liability now. And no RTM, no pension board, uh, had any say or input or developed any financials relative to that early retirement package.
I'm sorry, but I'm not beholden to those poor decisions. And for me, me for one, I want to do my job and my due diligence, and that's what I was elected to do. So, I'm going to vet these numbers as best I can.
Um, Representative Garzko?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, so, uh, going back to the, um, the table that was provided, it shows an impact in fiscal twenty-two of about a million dollars net if all the employees eligible took it, and about half a million if half of them took it. And, uh, but, and what everyone's talking about here, but I just want to say it more plainly, is that that would continue for the next twenty-odd years, a million, between five hundred and a million, uh, dollars a year. And we can, you know, changing the discount rate and everything might increase that, or- but- but even with that number, we're talking about spending somewhere around ten or twenty million dollars to do this, when we already have an underfunded pension, underfunded OPEB, and we're already having a hard time funding it. Um, and we're not quite, so it feels a little bit like kicking the can down the road. We're- we're saving some money immediately and spending a ton of money down the road, and I think that's what is giving some people some pause here. We- we're not really sure why we're doing this. It feels like we're going to pay for it later for a long time and a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Representative Monahan? Veronica?
Hi, Veronica Monahan, District One. So, when was the last time the town was restructured? And, I mean, change is very hard, it's very difficult, but, you know, change is necessary in order to move forward. So, if Brenda feels as though, though it's important, she's been there long enough now to affect some changes, then we should be behind her to make some changes. You know, while it's difficult, you can't say you're not going to assume any costs and just let, you know, things stay where they are indefinitely for fear of change and fear of costs. Of course, there's going to be costs associated with it, but, you know, I, the- the costs that, you know, I'm hearing seem very reasonable.
Thank you, um, Representative-
When was the town restructured last?
I don't know if, um, anybody has a response to that at Town Hall?
Well, I know that just from the minutes that I looked up when I was working on this, um, the town did it in two thousand nine, but I don't, I didn't, we couldn't find any, well, we really- um, the town did it in 2009, but I don't- I didn't- we couldn't find any- we really couldn't find anything. We didn't find any votes of the RTM or any analysis or any restructuring documents, uh, to my knowledge, just talking to people who were here at the time. They- they just hired the same people back. They didn't make any, um, significant restructuring changes. Is that answered? If anybody else was on the RTM, then maybe they could speak to it or...
I don't know, nobody's popping up. Um, okay, thank you. Um, Representative Gale?
Thank you. Hannah Gale, uh, District Six. So, from what I understood, um, from the actuary, Ron Hooker and Holcomb- Holcomb- step on, I'm gonna call you because I- without your last name being on the screen in front of me, there's no way I can attempt it. Um, but from what I understand, that he said, basically, these early retirees are currently on our books as salaried employees. So, but they're all gonna be eligible for retirement within a certain amount of time, right? That we're- I don't know exactly what the age limit is, but they're all gonna be approaching retirement anyway. And at the point where people retire, they would be switched over to the books as pension liabilities anyway. So, even though we're looking at this as a lump sum because it's gonna happen all at once, nevertheless, this is going to happen just as a natural course of nature, assuming that, you know, that we don't, you know, eliminate positions, which does all those awful things that you mentioned and adds so much instability to our town that I really don't think we wanna go there. So, honestly, based on what I have heard, I really think that all of my questions have been satisfied. I- it doesn't seem to me like it's necessary to have, you know, a third- another actuarial firm look at these figures. It's perfectly reasonable what you've said. Um, and I, you know, I actually, uh, you know, would be more inclined to doing this as quickly as possible because it seems like we really do have a full picture here. So, you know, I don't know what it all feels, but I- I'm pretty satisfied.
Um, Representative McCormick?
Uh, yes, good evening, uh, Representative- hang on one second. Uh, Representative McCormick, District Two. I just have one, uh, question. Um, you know, this- this whole proposal that's come from our first select woman has- has been, I believe, emanated from a- an attempt to modernize and to streamline and make more efficient our town government. And I think that's something that I just wanna make a comment about and perhaps ask our first select woman about and to confirm this, that, you know, one of the problems, I think, that we've seen over the past few years that's sort of come to light is that there have been many, many inefficiencies in our town government, many of which have led to, um, some of the more recent problems that reared their heads over the past year or so with the fill pile. And, you know, my understanding is that we have a- a town government that needs to be, um, kind of culled through, not in terms of the personnel per se, but all of the processes. And we need to really look, uh, with a fine eye at exactly how our ti- town does business so that things that happened in our town over the past several years don't happen again. We need to have more oversight of employees. We need to have more accountability for- of employees. And if this is the first step in the process that allows us to be able to do that, um, then I think that we all need to keep that in mind when we're- when we're making this decision, that this is coming from a place where it's the first step in a process to really kind of fix what's been broken with our town government for a long time. And I just wanted to make that comment or- and our question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Representative Ringel?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Would you want to- can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to make two- two comments. Um, one is that, uh, can we all please consider going forward that there's a cost to the town of not, um, doing this, of not upgrading and getting a higher skill set with customer service and people that are gonna bring ideas with modernizing the technology. Um, for instance, I know of a- of a builder who, um, high-end, like a- a very large builder that comes to town, he's- he's done a couple of projects. Going forward, he doesn't want to work with Fairfield anymore because he's had some frustrating experiences, um, with some of the staffing going on. And then, um, also, we have to consider that we have a really great opportunity going on right now because we've had a- a large number of out-of-staters move into- into Fairfield. And if they're calling Town Hall with certain needs and they wanna- they just bought a house that needs some renovations and they get some bad customer service going on, um, they've got- we've got a lot of competition with the nearby towns for them to move over to their- the other towns. So, they might've made a quick decision to move to Fairfield, but now, once they're settled here, they're gonna be assessing like, is this the right town? We wanna keep those people. We also want them to bring their businesses into town. So, please consider what the cost is of not doing this. And, um, it'd be great to not slow roll it. Thanks.
Thank you. I- I know I for one, and I think many of us, or maybe all of us feel that way, that it's, uh, it would be great to have more efficiencies and economies. And I think that's a reason, um, we approved at the, um, in the budget, um, continuing the Chief Administrative Officer because I know that was a big reason that the first select woman wanted that position was for this. But I think we're also saying we- we're looking for more information just to understand it. Um, let's see. Representative Walk?
Hi, Jay Walk, District Five. Um, through you, Madam Moderator, to, um, to Mr. Hazelcamp. Um, you know, I've been listening to all this. I- I'm, um, I'm not adverse to a lot of this that I'm hearing, to what can go on or what may not go on. Um, are we talking about early retirement or forced retirement, uh, for political reasons, um, like what happened in Trumbull, what I heard, where a person who worked for Parks and Rec there for a long time was forced out of her position for early retirement? And then the town had to, uh, hire three people just to take care of, you know, her position after she left. So, you know, I'm- I'm just, um, right at the point where, um, I don't know enough about what's going on right now personally. Everybody's looking to rush, you know, some people are- not everybody, some people are looking to rush into this, um, to do this and to get this out of the way. Uh, I'm- I'm- I'm for postponing- postponing this, um, to another meeting, um, to just get a grasp on all of this. And I don't know how everybody else is, you know, feeling. I know some people are feeling it's already should be, we should move forward. Um, but, I mean, you know, what happened in Trumbull, um, can just happen here. So, um, that's my point. Um, thanks for listening.
Can I address that?
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, it's- it's- so, I did the retirement in Trumbull and it was exactly the same as here. No one had to take the package. So, the notion that somebody thinks they were forced out, I- I don't know where that came from, um, but the package was entirely voluntary, just like this package is entirely voluntary. Nobody has to take it. Um, that's- that's the only response I can give you. I- I don't, off the top of my head, I haven't heard that complaint. Uh, at least it certainly didn't come to me, uh, because as far as I was concerned, people took the package because we offered a really good package, um, so.
Thank you.
It's just one of the points on the issue of- I- just, you know, the issue of going forward delay, I just wanna make one point because I met with the employees today. And I understand this is your, um, process and I appreciate that. I think they want an answer one way or the other because they feel like they're sort of in the middle. Um, so, it's not that I wanna rush it or not. I want you to have a full understanding of what's going on. I just think it'd be recognized that a lot of people are waiting for an answer one way or the other on whether we are or not gonna do this. Thank you.
Thank you. We do recognize that. Thank you. And, um, as- as we mentioned at the beginning of this discussion, um, I have asked the Pension Board and the Board of Finance for their input to just review this and give us a sense of the fiscal issues. Um, and they know that the first select woman would like to do this quickly and they're gonna try their best to do this quickly. Um, and I'd like to just ask if- if there's any way to get more specificity about the reorganization and the efficiencies that are planned. We've asked this a lot and it would be great to get that also in the next week or two. Um, we have a few more questions here. Representative Georgiades?
Hi, Drew Georgiades, District Nine. Um, I'm sure we all received the emails today from, uh, various town employees. And my question is for the HR department. Um, these employees said that, um, they felt that this had been approved and, um, I was feeling really, like, sort of distressed because the, um, the process has not really followed through yet. And I absolutely was feeling very sympathetic to them because we absolutely support our employees, the RTM, um, values the people that make this, uh, town pick. And for them to think that it's already been approved, um, so HR has- was that something, um, that was discussed and did you explain the process to them?
I absolutely did. Uh, as a matter of fact, I met with all the folks, oh, I don't know, it feels like a long time ago now, three or four weeks ago, I guess, at this point, and outlined what the package was. And I very specifically said it was subject to RTM approval. And not only that, that's what it says in the agreement. So, you know, people understood. I- I know that because people asked me about that process. And I said, "Look, we're gonna do a discussion between the unions and the town. We're gonna come up with a proposal and then at the end of the day, it has to be approved by the RTM." I think probably their frustration is sort of what I just outlined, which is, I think that they thought that this was not gonna take quite this long. And, you know, that's understandable in this, in the sense that the original documents sort of indicated a window that was gonna happen tomorrow and go to next week or so. And then they were gonna be retiring as of November first. So, from their worlds, because as we spent a lot of time, this is a stressful event for a lot of these people. This is difficult for them to decide whether they do or don't wanna retire. So, I think that because of the documents, firstly, they certainly knew it had to be subject to approval. Then I think sort of some of the frustration is that the outline in the document said this was gonna sort of be the meeting and we're gonna vote, and then there was gonna be a window, and then they were gonna be able to retire November first. I met with them- what is today? I don't even know. Tomorrow- yesterday, I think. Um, I- I met with them maybe today, I'm losing track of it, to just outline sort of what was going on, that there was discussion at the, um, RTM about it and that there may have to be adjustments to- there certainly has to be adjustments to the window, uh, and then we would have to deal with whether- what the effective date of retirement was gonna be.
So, you gave them the impression- you gave them the impression that you presented to the RTM and we would review it for a week, vote to approve, and that's what you set up, um, as their expectations?
No, I- I- first of all, I- I've never had an opportunity where this has taken weeks to have a review. And I appreciate that you think that's right and that's fine, but the normal expectation would've been a vote and then the approval of the agreement. And then there would've been a window that people would have elected. Uh, so, because that's not now happening, um, that's why there's confusion. The original, the reason their window was scheduled to open tomorrow was there was an expectation there would be an up and down vote today. So, that's unsettling to them. And I understand that and I understand that you have a right not to do that. But that was what- that's why, if you look at the documents, that's outlined in those documents that are in front of you. In the agreements, it says, this is the window, this is the expected date of retirement. And in those documents, it also says it's conditioned upon RTM approval. All of that is outlined in those documents. All of that was outlined in the employee meetings. That's what I can say about it.
So, but you- you created the expectation that it would be an up and down vote?
No, I created the expectation it would be a decision tonight because that's what I would've expected.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Representative Steele?
Hi, Jeff Steele, District Two. Um, I have a question for- for Mr. Hessecamp, but I- I wanna, um, preface that with a- with a comment. Um, you know, certainly we're going through a lot right now in terms of, you know, really looking at a cost-benefit analysis. Um, there are, uh, certainly costs involved. There's going to be costs involved in any sort of restructuring, no matter what. I'm a private sector guy. If a company wants to restructure, improve, modernize, become more efficient, more productive, more customer-friendly, it's going to entail a cost. We have to all decide what we're willing to- to bear with those costs. And certainly, these are- these are estimates in terms of whether half or everyone takes this. Now, I think the- the expectation is it's more around half, maybe even less. But I think we also gotta look at the- the benefits here and, as was mentioned earlier, what the cost of not doing this entails. So, my- my question to Mr. Hessecamp is, um, I know he's mentioned in the past, you know, he's done this five or six times, um, that- that Fairfield, when he came in, he thought was one of the sort of worst managed or organized towns he had seen. Um, what are some of the- the big gaps you've seen where we could improve, whether it's training or- or, um, sort of, uh, uh, you know, citizen interfacing, um, client service, um, let's say, training, performance reviews, management structure? Are there any particular gaps that you- that are just huge red flags where- where there would be cost in not changing this and not improving and not becoming more efficient? And just carrying on to have a town that we've- I think we've all had experiences where we've encountered various town employees that, you know, frankly, aren't the friendliest and, you know, there could be a comfort level as they carry on in the job. Companies change all the time. Why can't we, as a government, as a- as a town-run government, modernize? That will entail a cost. It's out of the way if that's working. So, again, my- my question, Jim, um, what are- what are some of the sort of these- these several areas that you feel we could, and this also addresses Mr. Gerber's, uh, point, where- where, like, this- this plan going forward can really make a dent to help our town, uh, sort of, you know, modernize?
I mean, I would say that the- it was one thing that would be number one, would be providing proper management to- for training, uh, to our managers because by and large, they really don't have a grasp of how to handle the performance issues with employees. So, you know, why do you feel a lot of that is because really there's not a level of accountability that it needs to happen with some of our managers. Um, you know, there's lots of other things that, um, you have a mismatch in skills. You know, there's a need to put in new computer systems and there's certainly some folks that might not be able to accomplish some of the skills that are necessary. Now, some of that is shame on the town, right? So, I say this in every town I go to, and every town is pretty much the same in this regard. They do a hair- a absolutely horrible job of investing in the people that we have, right? So, there's no money for training. There's no money for the types of activities that you would expect in the private sector. You mentioned the private sector. Uh, I hired a private sector's bad man when I was in Norwalk who came from Lehman Brothers. She was marvelous because Lehman Brothers spent enormous amounts of money training her so that she knew every aspect of Microsoft. It's invaluable. There's no- very few towns wanna have that kind of money spent. And I think that's really the travesty for some employees who really, really never had the opportunity because they weren't trained. Some of the folks are just never gonna get it. Um, but, you know, I think the commitment, if you're gonna do this, somebody asked a question in a meeting the other day, which said, "Why are we gonna do this if we have concerns that in ten years, it's just gonna be the same thing?" You should not have that expectation. The expectation should be, and you should hold everybody accountable for the next ten years, that we did this now and you promised us it was gonna change and you need to make sure it changes. And just a couple of, you know, just a sense of how bad it is from my little world. You know, I- I would say it's unequivocally, from an HR standpoint, the worst department I've come into because it seems to me that for decades, nothing was really done much in HR. The job descriptions, if you've seen them, some of them got sent out, uh, to different departments to review. I just sent one out yesterday. It was dated 1984. And that's just symptomatic of every job description in this town. So, that means a whole rewrite of many of the job descriptions. There is a shocking level of lack of policies in this town and sign-off of the policies that I just- even in other towns, those are basic-
that I just, even in other towns, those are basic things that don't exist here. So, you know, I think my sort of shock coming here was really just the magnitude of things that I would have expected would be here that are not.
Um, Mr. Hazelcamp, I just-
And I'm going to repeat, because if I didn't say it, you know, the whole point is to try to change that. And I appreciate the frustration. Everybody wants to see what the blueprint is. It's just not, and you have to know the dynamics of how this is going to work. Until you know who's leaving, it's impossible to sit down and restructure a department. Because if we have six people leave in one particular union, the response is going to be different than if seven admins leave. So, until there's a process where we have a really good sense of who's leaving, it's really not, it would be a waste of time to really structure until we know who's leaving. It's just, I know that's sort of frustrating to folks. I know everybody wants to grab it and steal it. And I just, you can't do that until we know who's leaving. So, thank you.
Mr. Hazelcamp, can you address another question? Those are all terrific things that are, A, desires to do, training, rewriting job descriptions, establishing policies. And those are like, basic, great HR things, and if we don't have them, we really need them. I'm wondering why that can't be instituted now before we spend all this money on this other stuff? I mean, can't those things start without spending all the money to do a retirement plan like this?
So, there's really two issues. Have they started? Yes, because I got hired here, and I can't live and breathe the way it's run in my office. That really doesn't go to the issue of the global, you know, skill issues in different departments that are not going to be fixed in the short run. It's just not going to happen. You know, my personal assessment of the town is there's, we need people with high skill levels in mid-level jobs that we don't have in this town. And correspondingly, maybe we have too many admins in the town. Or maybe the admins need to be deployed differently. You know, we've had discussions. There's all kinds of things that can be done. Until we know who's leaving, we can't really codify it. You know, there's ways to create floaters that we should have between departments. I think Brenda mentioned this in another session, where we move some of the admins based on operational need, right? So, it's busy in this department, we can move resources to that department, rather than necessarily have two people sitting there all day through the whole year, which is inefficient. There's all kinds of that fallout that needs to happen. And once we find out how many people are leaving out of various departments, and what do the departments want their structures to be, because I'm the one that says that there are people that we need to add who have higher skills, and I think there's some likely people that have less skills that we probably don't need to replace.
Okay, thank you. Representative Darrell?
Yes, hi, Alex Darrell, RTM Three. Through you, Madam Moderator, to Mr. Hazelcamp. What happens if the RTM rejects, detoes this agreement or, you know, stuff?
If it gets rejected, it's done. You know, that's what that means. You folks have shot it down, and that would be the end of the early retirement package. And then, we would have to deal with what's the restructuring going to look like with whatever else we can do. As I mentioned, you know, we don't, it's not my view to go down the road of having layoffs, but that would be one of the possible scenarios if you really have to do that. It's very difficult. In some unions, it's very difficult. In other unions, we have more latitude, and a lot of that's a part of what's in the various collective bargaining agreements. So, the short answer is, if it goes down, it goes down. And then, we have to regroup and decide how we're going to approach the restructuring, and how we're going to deal with that issue.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Representative Vergara?
Steel Vergara, District Seven. Call me conservative. I've been called worse names before, but I think I'm not in a position to make a decision of this magnitude at this point. I think that, especially in the circumstances that we're dealing with right now, our economic circumstances with joblessness at the rates of depression-level era, low, crazy-low interest rates, COVID costs that we haven't even grappled with for our Board of Education, cliffs that we built in from last budget season. I would like to approach these numbers soberly and prudently. I want help working through this with the Board of Finance. There are finance experts. I would really appreciate the extra eyes on this, especially at this time, when we're dealing with so many factors that are scary financially. And I don't think that it's responsible to take this leap without having a little bit more information. So, I would like to make a motion to postpone to a date certain, which would be our next regular meeting, not that far along. It's just two weeks away, October 26th. I'd like to postpone till then.
Thank you. I have a second. Representative Spohlier is seconding that. Any discussion on that?
Madam Moderator, Representative Iacano, I have discussion.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Moderator, to Representative Vergara. What steps would you like to take in between there? I heard you start them, but I didn't hear you formally request them.
I think that this would give us, I think that it would give us the opportunity to have it vetted, some of these issues vetted through the Board of Finance and the Pension Board in time for our next regularly scheduled meeting on the 26th.
So, are you suggesting that we postpone so that they have an opportunity to review the numbers presented to us?
Yeah.
So, as a part of this postponement, it would be an expectation of the body that the moderator asks the Board of Finance to consider the numbers that are before us?
Yeah.
Okay. Because those requests definitely need to come from the body and not unilaterally through the moderator, so that would make sense.
Can we add to that, that we are also looking for the Pension Board to have the opportunity to review the numbers?
I believe that's what Representative Gerber just said.
Okay. I heard Board of Finance. So, okay. So, the motion, if I can get this right, is to postpone to the next regular meeting so that the Board of Finance and the Pension Board have the opportunity to review the numbers and report to the RTM? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And there's a-
I have a further question, Madam Moderator, based on whether or not, and I need to know this depending on the postponement. So, it is, it might not sound like it, but it is pertinent to the postponement. Is the Chairman of the Pension Board on the call this evening?
I don't know. Brian, are you on the call? Mr. Vahy?
Does anybody know the approximate timeline for the Pension Board to review these things and get back to us?
Wasn't it said that they have a meeting next week? Isn't that what Mr. Hazelcamp said? They have a meeting next Tuesday?
Yes, that's to approve having an actuary take a look at this. And then, I think I've been told it could be a week or two for them to do that. And then, the Board of Finance would meet after that.
So, is it possible that we'll have, do you know that it's, will it be possible to have something to look at in time for our committee meeting on the 19th?
They are aiming for that because they really do want to help the first select woman get an answer quickly, but then, they're going to do the best they can.
Okay, so you've, you've received feedback that that will happen, to the best of their ability?
Yes, I have. I have. And we're, Mr. Kelly is going to try to unmute Mr. Vahy to make sure he doesn't have anything to correct me. I don't want to speak, you know, but I don't know if he will. Brian, are you on?
And everyone?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vahy.
Hi there, everyone.
Should I get that timing correct?
So, right, we've scheduled this special meeting for one week from today, because it was the fastest week in our special meetings notifications. It's a one-week lag. And there is an actuary that we can utilize. I've spoken with him. You know, I can't officially engage him without, the Board has to do that. But the color I got was two to three weeks. But they can start giving the, just utilizing the information that's already contained in our public valuation. So, that's the methodology that we use, so that, you can put that into their system, so that speeds things up. And then, if we can get the exact inputs that Hooker and Holcomb was using, and get those in there, we could speed this all up. I'm basically saying that even though it's a week before we can officially engage the actuaries, at his own risk, he's willing, you know, he's to start, so that we can make it as quickly as possible. So, that would give us, if it's two and a half weeks, that means 10 days from Monday, which puts us into that third week, I think. You said the 19th was your committee meeting?
Yeah, so just so you know, Brian, our typical schedule is we would hear it on the 19th. Now, if you think you're going to get it on the 19th, and then you needed to give it to the Board of Finance, perhaps the moderator could move our committee meeting to, say, the 21st. Is that in the realm of possibility?
Yeah, and I don't want to speak out of turn for the Board of Finance, but we, some informal conversations-
Right, just relevant to you. I'm trying to figure out timelines.
Right, well, we could have, we could do the presentation, like, we could have the presentation at the same time, invite the Board of Finance, so they could see the actuarial numbers simultaneously, and hear the discussion, so that we weren't, you know, holding up that whole, you know, holding up their process as well. We did that this spring as well. I think it worked okay. So, that's, I mean, that's what we're trying to plan to do, to help move these things as quickly as possible.
So, we could also, Representative Iacano, if we, it might be safer to move it out at least a month, a week, and have sort of what we did this month. It sounds like that week of the October 19th might be the week that all of this is happening at the Pension Board and Board of Finance level. So, it might make sense for us to do the committee meeting on the 26th and the regular meeting on November 2nd, to be safe.
Mr. Vahy, is that a more realistic timeline?
Well, given that I'm not in control of how the third, how fast the third party that's not here on the conversation can work, it would make me a little more comfortable because then I'd hate to have to just send a note out and go, "Jeez, it's, he said 20 hours." And so, you know, I've got my fingers crossed, and that, you know, that speaks to a shorter timeframe. But I'm afraid that if I get everybody set up for the 19th, and then it would, you know, put us in a bad spot. Yes, that would be preferred.
All right. Well, the only thing, Madam Moderator, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Just a couple of concerns there is, is we're pushing ourselves into, I think, into election week.
Yeah, actually, I think that would be a bad time for the town clerk to be dealing with that. You're right. Before we settle on a date, there's, Jim Brown, the Chairman of the Board of Finance, also can speak to scheduling, and I think that would be helpful as well, because it would also involve the Board of Finance. So, Jim, if you're able to comment as well, that would be great.
Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, who can hear you. Thanks.
Okay. Good evening, yeah, this is Jim Brown, Chairman of the Board of Finance. And Mr. Vahy and I have spoken a, more than a few times over the past few days, and we will work together to try and expedite, but do a thorough job of reviewing these numbers, reviewing the overall plan, so that we can provide any information that the RTM would like us to provide, so you can make a decision.
Thank you very much.
So, I'll send a message out to our Board tomorrow. We'll try and line up some dates, but really, yes, we would need to work with the Pension Board, get their feedback. Once we have the Pension Board's feedback, we can set a date as a board to get together and have our discussion as a boards.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess, based on that, Madam Moderator, I guess my ask would be that this is expedited in such a fashion so that we would be able to appropriately vote on it the last week in October.
Mm-hmm. That would be, do you think that's something we can aim for, Mr. Vahy?
Well, I, you know, I, maybe we have to have a committee on the 26th, and we vote on the 29th. I don't know.
Right, right. I think we can make it the end of the week if we have to. So, I think, I think probably we can set an absolute date right now, but that should be absolute, that should definitely be our goal, I think, before Election Day, not that week, to try to get this on the last week of October.
Thank you. I think it's good for the employees also, who are waiting to try and finalize what our expectations are. Thank you very much. I yield the floor. I see Representative Steele wants to speak.
Thank you for raising that. Actually, Representative Gerber first asked to speak. Bill, do you have something?
Yes, I mean, when we're talking about timing, we've sort of slipped into more discussing the cost, the pension side. I just don't want it to be lost, that I think there, that what I said earlier, I think there are a large number of us who think there should be some convincing presentation on the payback for this investment. What you assume is up to you. You could assume 50, all 55 people take the package. But, you know, Mr. Hazelcamp just said something about training. I mean, there's a, if we're, you know, if a lot of this is about putting in training, and putting in, like, IT systems, there are costs to those as well. There should be a vision here, and it could be laid out by department, by systems, and we should know what it is that you're committing to, and you can assume that everyone's going to take it. But right now, I know nothing, except for a few words that sound good. And I, I think it would be responsible for us to vote for something that's out there.
Madam Moderator, point of information, I'm sorry, we're on postponement. We're on postponement?
No, yes, and you're talking about, you're talking about postponing to get certain information, and I'm just, I don't want to come back in two weeks, three weeks, and say, "This is what you asked for, and this is what you got." And I'm saying, that's not all we're asking for, okay? And, you know, from where I, from where I stand, if we get that other stuff, it's not enough. And I don't really understand where the, you know, the first select woman's office, you know, what they can do, or if they can't do anything, you know, then that's where we are. But I'm not sure that they're, they haven't committed to putting something together tonight. So, I don't know where we are on that.
Thank you. Yes, so, we would ask that that be available too, for that meeting, absolutely. I agree. It's not, that's come up a lot in this conversation, that it's not only about those numbers. Representative Steele?
Hi, I'm Jesse Steele, District Two. I agree, we're all looking for a little more information on each of those. I want to understand what the motion is now. Is it just to postpone? Are there caveats to it? Have we added language to it? Or is it just something to postpone to whatever date we haven't yet decided? I want to be clear what we're voting on. Is any of it dependent on hearing these others, or are we asking to get that information in the meantime? Do we have to be careful about the path that this takes? That's my first question. My second question is, in terms of getting another actuarial, who's asking for that? I just, maybe I missed it. Are we as a body asking, or is one member asking?
No, no. We're asking that the Pension Board review this, and then it's up to the Pension Board how they think they have to review it. That's their, we don't know about pensions. So, we're just asking for the Pension Board to review this and let us know-
So we're just asking for the Pension Board to review this and let us know what the increased obligations will be, and, you know, what the numbers are. And they can decide how they want to do it, if they hire someone else, or they, whatever. That's their choice.
So whether they are able to hire an actuary firm or not, or they're able to discuss as a body or not, or they're able to individually consult with each other and provide comments to us or not, we would still postpone to that date to be considered once again and voted on.
I would actually rather say we postpone until we receive the report from the Pension Board and the Board of Finance. And to aim for the last week of October, but that's the condition that we're setting before we vote. That's what's being proposed.
Okay, so that, but that's not the motion that they, so you're saying you would prefer for that to happen, but yet nobody's made a motion to do that?
I would prefer that.
Okay.
That's right. That's right. So the motion that I understand that we have right now before us is to postpone to the next meeting of the RTM, so that the Board of Finance and the Pension Board have the opportunity to review the numbers and report to the RTM. That's our current motion. I guess I would suggest an amendment to that motion, which would be to postpone it to the time, such time as the Pension Board and the Board of Finance can report to the RTM at its meeting on its, on their findings about this plan.
So are you making an amendment to that?
Yes, I am. I don't know if anybody would like to second my amendment. Representative McDermott, I see. So we can discuss that amendment. If there's no discussion, we can vote on it. Is there any discussion on? Go ahead, Mr. Steele.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, so how does your amendment differ from the First Amendment?
Because I'm saying, I'm not saying just postpone it to the next meeting. I'm saying postpone it until the Board, Pension Board and the Board of Finance can report to us at a meeting. So it would be receiving that report versus a particular date. With the understanding that-
You can't. Procedurally, you can't. Procedurally, you can't. Procedurally, that's out of order. You can't. You'd have to, because you can only postpone to a date certain, the next meeting.
Hmm, okay. All right, so we'll go back to the original one then. The postpone to the next meeting, so the Board of Finance and the Pension Board have the opportunity to review the numbers and report to the RTM. I'll withdraw my motion. So any other comments on that motion to postpone?
I would just, I mean, I'm still sort of at the floor here. I would, I would just be careful in saying, to give them an opportunity to comment, but not that it would be held up if they can't comment, or can't meet the comment. Because otherwise, this thing could be slowed down and sidetracked in many different ways.
I think the intention, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Jeff.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I think the intention is that we're required, we're not going to be ready to vote unless we hear that. So perhaps that should be rephrased until, so that the Board of Finance and the Pension Board will report to us at that meeting, can report to us at that meeting, on their review of the numbers.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. Honestly, the motion's fine the way that it is, because if you're not ready and you don't get anything when we come back, then you can just make another motion to postpone.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
And we've laid the groundwork. I think Mr. Vahy understood. I think Mr. Brown understood that it's our expectation that we're trying to get this done the last week in October. They both committed on the record that they're going to do everything they can to expedite that in a reasonable fashion.
Okay.
That's why I would keep it as postponed to the certain date. With the understanding clearly that we want to get their advice. We want to get their consent, their thoughts, their concerns. I just don't think adding it into the postponement, I think that's an unnecessary sidetracking, potential delay to it, and I'm not in favor of that.
Adding what to the postponement? I'm sorry, say that again? I couldn't hear you, really.
I just, I'm not in favor of the amendment. I'm in favor of the original motion, which I believe still is to postpone to the next meeting. I think that's a clean, a clean motion, and it's not sidetracked or anything tacked onto it. I think that's a fair, fair motion. And will naturally want to get the feedback from Pension Board and Board of Finance, to force upon it.
I guess I would like to have that in the motion, because Representative Iacono suggested that we need to have the approval of the RTM for me to ask for that input. So if that's, if that's how people feel, then I should, we should have that, and that was, I think, Pam's suggestion, unless I'm misspeaking.
Yeah, I think maybe we're getting a little bit lost. The motion is postponed to a date certain, and the expectation is that it's going to, there will be a review of the numbers by the Board of Finance and the Pension Board. And then we had a discussion, the minute it should reflect, we had a discussion that they're going to work to get us that number, so that we can vote potentially the week of October 26th.
Mm-hmm.
As the person who made the motion, I'm comfortable with that, too, to just put it to the date certain.
So I just sent language, and you'll have to tell me if that is what you intend, Representative Vergara. Motion to postpone to the next meeting of the RTM, so that the Pension Board and Board of Finance can review the plan and report to the RTM.
I thought we just said we were going to postpone to a date certain and leaving it at that. Didn't Representative Vergara just say that?
Um, I guess, so Pam didn't even say, okay.
Yeah, so you just have to change the word "next meeting" to "a date certain."
Okay.
Postpone to- Sorry, too many calls.
Do we not have that date certain yet, or just to the next meeting? Isn't it to the next regular?
I think to the next meeting is a date certain.
Okay, yep, you're right, Jeff. You know what, Jeff, you're right. I'm sorry. You're right. Jeff is correct.
I thought I had said the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Exactly, exactly.
All right. I monkeyed that up, I'm sorry.
Okay, so are we not mentioning the Pension Board and the Board of Finance? I would like to see that, but I don't, I can't tell.
No, I think what you put up there is fine. I think what you put up there is fine.
Well-
Jeff, is that right?
Okay, do you agree that-
Wait, no, 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 hold on. What she put up there is not what Representative Vergara was, was fine with the clean statement of postpone to the next regularly scheduled meeting, period.
Steele, is that what you said? Or did you say that what Pam had suggested was okay with the Pension Board and the Board of Finance?
I like the clarity of putting the Pension Board review and the Board of Finance review, and with, so that we can all vote on that and acknowledge that that's what our expectation is. If Jeff has an issue with that, and he just wants to vote on postponing it till the date certain, with the knowledge that we are referring this to the Board of Finance for review, as well as the Pension Board, I'm fine with that.
I guess I would ask that it be in there, because if there's any question about whether I had the authority to ask for that, I want to be clear that the RTM wants me to ask for that. So I would like to keep it in there.
Yeah, the risk is that it could get held up, so that's why I have a problem with it.
Well, but that's, I mean, that's kind of what we need to have happen, though. I mean, I think what we're voting on is we're postponing this because we want that information. So if it got held up, because we don't have the information, that's-
Okay, so we'll make it, we'll make it clear that it's to request their input versus their approval.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's not anything, it's our, exactly. I just want to be clear that no one's interpreting it that way.
And I think the motion says that clearly, that they're just reporting, reviewing and reporting. There's no, I don't think anyone expects that they don't have the right to approve or disapprove. Okay. So given the motion, the motion that's on the table that is in our chat room, but I'll read it for the benefit of the public. Motion to postpone to the next meeting of the RTM, so that the Pension Board and the Board of Finance can review the plan and report to the RTM. And Josh, Representative Garskov seconds. Any more discussion, or can we go to a vote? Okay, can you all unmute, and we'll vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And I know that everyone's going to work hard to get this done quickly, because it's important, it's important to the employees, too, to know what's happening. Thank you. So can we have a motion to adjourn? Representative Pistilli, Representative Garskov second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm assuming nobody has opposed. Thank you very much. We'll all be meeting again soon. Have a good night.